I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the universal liberty and justice of all.
As an adult and president, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we're going straight into our informational reports, and that's Charter School Monthly Financial Supports, April 2025. Charter School financial reports are presented to the Board for informational purposes only. Board, no approval for the Charter School financial statement is required. At this time, we move right along to the Superintendent and Staff Reports on Selected Topics. Dr. Prince.
Madam Chair, if I may, we do need to do the approval of instructional materials purchased for financial literacy and money management.
Okay, separately?
Yes.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay. I didn't see it. Where is it on the agenda?
It's, um...
15.1.
Right before information.
It's the management class.
All right, Board, we want to approve the, as you said, teaching and learning?
Yes, ma'am, and I just recommend the Board adopt the proposed personal finance and money management and 25, 26 instructional materials.
What members, you've heard the Superintendent? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Ingersoll, second, Ms. Hawley, any discussion over this, Board members? Seeing none, motion carries 5-0. Superintendent?
Well, glad to see some folks here tonight. I do have just a couple of reminders. You know, we wrapped up a very successful school year. I just can't think enough. Our, you know, all the employees at work for the benefit of children. We had our administrator leadership function last Friday with all of our principals and assistant principals and district directors and leadership, and just had a wonderful meeting, and we had a wonderful year capped off by some really just amazing results from the outcomes that our students had. I will be presenting those to the Board at the June 24th workshop at 9:00 a.m., followed by the proposal to the Board for goals for next year, because I don't know how we're going to top this year, but we're going to try. Just a reminder, we do have a Board meeting July 8th, which is going to be at 5:00 p.m., and then summer graduation, to cap off another extraordinary year of graduation rates, is going to be at Fort Pierce Central, July 15th, and then our leadership kickoff, It Never Stops, that's going to be July 24th, and the Board is invited to that. It would love to see you. That is our kickoff, and we will be at Legacy High, and we're also doing a live kickoff welcoming back all of our staffs and teachers at Legacy High as well, and that will be at 9:30. I'm looking forward this week. I leave for Tampa for FSBA and FADS. That's a conference that superintendents and some of the Board members attend, and will be leaving Wednesday, returning Friday, just in time to see the 1 o'clock performance of Matilda at Port St. Lucie High School. So, super, super excited. But I cannot contain my excitement, because the most exciting thing tonight is the introduction of three new principals and truly outstanding, outstanding leaders. And as I call them up, I'd like them to, if they've got any family, please recognize your family and have them stand, and I'd like to welcome them and say a few words to the Board. So Russell Ader from the new principal at Fair Lawn Elementary School, Russell.
Good evening, Chairman Dr. Mills, Vice Chairman Mr. Ingersoll, School Board members. Good evening, Dr. Prince. It is with immense gratitude, deep humility, and great excitement that I stand before you this evening to accept the honor of serving as the next principal at Fair Lawn. I am truly grateful for this opportunity and to be part of a district that consistently prioritizes the well-being and success of every student. This commitment to excellence is what makes our school district so special. I recognize that Fair Lawn is more than just a school. It is a vibrant community, rich in history, culture, and tradition, and I am honored to be part of its continuing story. If I may, I'd like to take a moment to express my heartfelt thanks to those who have helped shape me, to my wife Danielle and our children Emma, Luca, and Max. Thank you for your patience, flexibility, and support. The life of a school administrator often extends far beyond the school day, and I am incredibly fortunate to have a family that embraces this with grace and understanding, most of the time. If I don't say it enough, I love and appreciate you. I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to Dan Frank for his mentorship and reminding me that behind every data point is a student with a story. His guidance helped me see data not just as numbers, but as a powerful tool to drive meaningful change. To Andrea Popwell, your leadership and friendship over eight years at Centennial have left an indelible mark on me. You gave me the most valuable gift early in my career, permission to fail, and in that space, I found the confidence to grow, to lead, and to learn. To Jennifer Ingersoll, thank you for your leadership at Westgate this past year. You challenged me often, taught me much, and reminded me to always consider the 10th domino. To the administrators I worked with at Centennial, Kim Wa, Mona Buchanan, Susan Mannion, Keone Shabobo, Sandra Olivera, and Dr. Capo, thank you for your trust, your collaboration, and your friendship. And to Assistant Principals Melissa Hudgens and Leslie Taylor, thank you for welcoming me so warmly to Westgate and for your constant support and camaraderie. And finally, to the faculties and staffs and students at both Centennial and Westgate, thank you for shaping me, challenging me, and supporting me. And now to my new Fair Lawn family, I am honored to join you. I promise to lead with transparency, collaboration, and a deep respect for the incredible work you do every day. To the parents and guardians, I am committed to building strong, open relationships with each of you as we work together to create a safe, inclusive, and joyful learning environment where every child can thrive. And to the students, you are the heart of Fair Lawn. I can't wait to learn with you, laugh with you, and celebrate your successes, both big and small. I am truly honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. I am super excited for Fair Lawn. Fair Lawn is truly getting an exceptional leader. The next new principal we're going to be introducing.
Could we please have his family stand back up so we can acknowledge them again?
Okay. Family, family.
What's going on? They won't stand.
Have the family stand. Come on, come on, come on. They're shy. Let's go. All right.
Who is that?
Well, I can tell you, the next new principal I'm going to introduce, I'm really super proud, because, you know, I've had a few of my children attend Palm Point, and not just that, my lovely wife is a teacher at Palm Point, and also, the person I'm going to introduce was one of my child's teachers, and I know excellence when I see it, because she came home every day and talked about her favorite teacher, Ms. Markowitz, and how far you have come. So Dana Markowitz, the new principal of Palm Point K8. Dana?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I am incredibly honored to be named the new principal of Palm Point. My leadership journey has been both challenging and rewarding, and I want to take this opportunity to thank those who have supported me along the way, those who have encouraged me, challenged me, believed in me, and shaped the leader I am today. First and foremost, my deepest gratitude goes to my parents. They instilled in me the value of hard work, taught me to give my best each day even when it's tough, and reminded me to always lead with a kind heart and an open mind. To my sons, Michael and Evan, you are my greatest inspiration. Thank you for your patience, your grace, and understanding. You've always known that my heart belongs to both our family and the school community, and yet you remain so supportive and my biggest fans. To my family, friends, and colleagues, thank you for being so supportive and continuing to lift me up. Your encouragement has fueled my growth, and I am blessed to have so many people in my corner. To Mrs. Perez, your mentorship has been instrumental. Thank you for believing in me, providing me with opportunities for growth, and for encouraging me to stay focused on what's most important. You've created a lasting legacy at Palm Point, one I am honored to uphold. To Mrs. Wallert, our executive director, thank you for asking the tough questions, which always got me thinking about continuous school improvement, and for holding high expectations while being a constant voice of encouragement and empowerment. To Mrs. Lee and the Oakhamic team, although my time with you was short, it was incredibly impactful. Thank you for making me feel like part of the team from day one, and for giving me the space to lead and grow alongside such dedicated educators. To Mrs. Slover, I am grateful for your guidance and for your willingness to always be available to assist to answer my questions. I've learned so much from your leadership and support has been meaningful part of my growth. And thank you to Mrs. Stubbs, my principal mentor, for being such an inspiring role model and for welcoming me into your school to gain insight into the significant work you do. And of course, to Dr. Prince, thank you for your leadership and for the invaluable lessons I learned from you in the Elite Program. These lessons live in my daily practices and have become my leadership philosophy, which continue to shape the way I approach this work with intentionality and purpose. Thank you to the School Board and District Leadership as I feel fully supported stepping into this new role. This opportunity is more than just a position, it's a calling. I am committed to contributing to the continued excellence of Palm Point and the success of St. Lucie Public Schools. As we say at Palm Point, I am mission ready. Thank you.
Awesome. Hey Dana, 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 will you want to have your family stand up real quick? Family here. Come on, the wind beneath the wings. All right. Super, super happy, and congratulations. Next, we have the new principal of White City, Mr. John DeVino.
I'll be very brief, because as you know, I always get very emotional once I get up here in front of the board. I would first just like to thank the Board and Superintendent Prince for the opportunity to serve as the principal of White City Elementary School. I understand the magnitude of the responsibility, and I appreciate the trust you have in me to fulfill this role. I, like you, seek to serve the community, and I'm honored and humbled to be entrusted with this position. Nothing is more important than the care and education of our children. I would also like to thank the principals that I have had and had the pleasure to learn and serve under. Principal Davis, he's not here tonight, but he's my mentor, and I thank him for everything he's done for me. Principal Patton and Principal Lautis, I appreciate their support and their leadership and what they have done to grow me to this position. I want to thank my wife for, as always, sharing me with my second love, which is being here in the school system. Thank you all very much. Go Wildcats.
Thank you, John. And I don't necessarily want her to speak, but I want her to stand and be recognized. So Latonya Green, can you stand our new principal of our new Western Grove K8? Now, Latonya, I don't want to embarrass you, but we had principals come in, and it wasn't an interview, it was a pitch. So I really wanted the principals to define what their vision for the school was, and all I can say was that Latonya's creativity and her presentation included her, you know, on a forklift out at the site with the hard hat. I don't know how she got out there, but it was truly impressive, and she even had cookies made that were Western Grove on the front. So that's not the name of the school, but it was a truly, fully realized, very detailed presentation. And by the way, Latonya, when you walked out, we literally looked at each other, and we were like, oh my God, that was amazing. So congratulations. I'm super excited for you, and that school is going to open in August of 2026, and I'm sure you're going to make sure that that happens, right, Mr. O'Leary? On time, on budget?
On time, on budget.
All right, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. John, did your family stand up? Do we recognize your family? Okay, okay, okay. Just want to make sure we wasn't missing anyone. All right, at this time, and congratulations to all of our new principals. We know you're going to do a wonderful job, especially since you like to cry a lot. We got good people when you're crying. Attorney Scott?
No report.
No report from Attorney Scott. Okay, Board members, we're going right to your reports. We're going to start out with you, Ms. Hawley. No report. Ms. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am, it's been a good year, and I want to thank everyone for that. But I also do want to talk about next meeting. I won't be here for the June 24th meeting. Just want to make sure that was on the record. I did sit with the Superintendent and talk about some of his goals and aspirations for next year, along with some of the goals that he accomplished. So I've already checked that box to make sure my responsibilities are taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Ingersoll. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, good evening, everyone. This month has been filled with extraordinary examples of excellence, resilience, and community spirit that I'm excited to share with you. I had the pleasure of attending the year-end band concert at Palm Point, where I was impressed by band director, Mr. Cromer, Comer. Yes, Mr. Comer, right? Exactly. Though he's been at Palm Point for one year, having previously directed at Alapatow Flats K8, I was very impressed by the connection between him and his students, and the mutual respect between him, the students, and the parents. The principal shared that Mr. Comer is deeply committed to our students, constantly creating new ways to motivate and reward them, and I saw that firsthand at that concert. The musical talent at Palm Point is extraordinary. I want to thank the parents for their unwavering support for this program. It was packed. Parents, thank you so very much. After the performance, it was heartwarming to see everyone, parents, students, the band director, and the maintenance staff, working together to wrap up the event and get the cafeteria ready for the next day. I'm going to move on to graduation. As for graduation, may I say the days were hot? They were long, hot days, which did not stop the ceremonies, though. They ran like clockwork from dusk to dawn. I want to recognize every department that contributed. It was a true collaborative effort. I don't want to start naming departments, but I would be remiss if I did not thank our maintenance department, who had to put the floors down in the arena, and I believe it was over 800 chairs, and not only did they have to put them down, they had to take them up. So, you know, I just really, really want to say thank you. The carpenters, the audio and video, the communication, the lighting department, these were people with their boots on the grounds who did the heavy lifting, and as always, you know, they are my frontline heroes. The transportation department, if I did not say your department, please, please forgive me and thank you. Last but not least, thank you to our parents who entrusted the St. Lucie County Public Schools with their precious gift, your children. Principal Tellez, she's not here, but Principal Tellez, this is your th- is she here? No. Tellez, she's not here, but Principal Tellez, this is your th- is she here? No. This is your third year at Port St. Lucie High, and your graduation ceremonies have proven to be the most challenging, thus the most memorable. I have tremendous respect for your leadership and ability to navigate challenges. In your graduation speech to the class of 2025, you shared how your team transformed a student's dismissive comment. The comment was, "What do you expect at Port St. Lucie High?" And she transformed that comment into a catalyst for change. She said, no matter what idea she came up with, it wasn't working. She said something was missing. That thing was to empower the students to recognize, and she empowered the students to recognize their own potential. When she did, she watched them flourish and take ownership of their school's transformation. The key to Port St. Lucie High School's success was always within the students themselves. One team, one dream. She then decided that she was going to raise the expectations, her expectations. She was going to raise the bar, and the students, they exceeded them. Reflecting on the student's question, "What do you expect?", bless you, it's Port St. Lucie High School. What I witnessed at graduation, let me read this again, I'm sorry. Reflecting on that student's question, "What do you expect at Port St. Lucie High?", what I witnessed at graduation was exactly what I expected from Port St. Lucie High and their staff. Regardless of the heat, the weather, the storm, the challenges or obstacles, Port St. Lucie High School rose to meet them. Students, staff, and parents all demonstrated resilience and grace under pressure. Port St. Lucie High, I am incredibly proud of you. Port St. Lucie High School, your future shines brightly, and you have proven you can weather any storm. Principal Tellez, your entire team of educators, you have my, and your entire team of educators, you have my deepest admiration and respect for your outstanding work and resilience. Congratulations to our new principals and assistant principals. I wish you success as you lead our students and your team of educators in a great 2025, 26 school year. In closing, I will leave you with the lyrics of the song sung by one of my all-time favorite performers, Dionne Warwick. She says, "What the world needs now is love, sweet love. It's the only thing that there's just too little of. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. No, not just for one, but for everyone." Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, are you trying to make us cry? Ms. Harrison?
No report.
Okay. I just want to again emphasize graduation. Graduation went wonderfully. We're so proud of all of our schools, even especially our alternative schools, who those children have gone through a lot, and they were able to make it. We had every school graduate over 90% of our students. That's incredible. That is absolutely incredible, and is due to so many people in our district who have the calling and mission to do the work. Thank you so much for your incredibly hard work. We appreciate every last one of you. Also, we know that we have summer camps that's opening up all over this district. Please keep our children in your prayers as they attend these camps, our parents, and just everyone as they go on their vacations for safe travels. We have a summer camp that we opened up yesterday, and we have three air conditioners in our building, and they all went down over the weekend. So yesterday, we had to make that decision if we were going to open up with no air conditioning, and we made the decision to do so. And I'm so glad we did. Now, we were soaked and wet, but we were on a mission. Someone mentioned our St. Lucie County Public Schools. We're on a mission, and we have a calling. And so we enjoyed ourselves, we really did. But especially the children, I had one little boy say to me, "I can't wait till I get home and tell my grandma how much fun I had today, and we're all soaking wet." So we understand a little bit about what you principals and teachers and staff go through on a day-to-day basis. And yes, Ms. Hawley and I and Dr. Prince will be going to the FSBA, and we will be traveling there to become a little better of what we do each and every day. Thank you so much for coming out to our Board meeting this evening, for each and every one of you. We appreciate you very much for taking out of your busy schedule to make sure that our children are educated. At this time, we are adjourned.